Good evening, everyone. I'll call this October 26, 2020, meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. Will staff please take attendance of tonight's planning commissioners?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Here.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary. Not present. Commissioner Laban.
Here.
Commissioner Penn.
Here.
Commissioner Rosenberg. Not present. Commissioner Rudolph.
Here.
Commissioner Sturza.
Here.
And I see Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Here, pleasure.
That is six present, one absent.
Thank you, Nellie. So, tonight, our cable broadcast room is under reconstruction or under construction, so it's not operational, but people can watch tonight's meeting on Richfield's website and YouTube as normal. We apologize for any inconvenience to viewers for this, but we'll get it back up as soon as we can. Currently, we're meeting on this virtual platform, WebEx, but the public can still participate in our meetings, and we'd like you to do that. There's two times in our agenda when the public can participate in our planning commission meetings. First is during open forum, and second is during the public hearing where you can call in live if we have a public hearing or hearings that night. I will say that phone number later to call in live, so you might want to get a pen ready. I'll say it once now, too. It's 612-861-0651. So, next, we have approval of the minutes of our last meeting of September 28, 2020. So, do I have a commissioner to make a motion and a second?
Commissioner Penn, so moved.
Commissioner Sturza, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Nellie, would you take role again, please?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Commissioner Laban.
Aye.
Commissioner Penn.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Aye.
And Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
Six ayes, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
All right. Next, we have open forum, and that is an opportunity for residents to address the planning commission on items not on tonight's agenda. Melissa, do we have any letters, emails, or voice messages for open forum tonight?
We do not. Chair Kwam.
Okay, thank you. All the details for doing that are on the Richfield City webpage, website. You go to city government, planning commission, agendas and minutes page. It's the same page where you find the link to these live meetings. There's information on how to do that for open forum. Next, we have approval of tonight's agenda. Do we have a motion and a second? I will move. Chair Kwam moves. Do we have a second?
Commissioner Penn, second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Laban?
Madam Chair, I'd like to propose amending the agenda to insert a discussion item. As you probably noticed, as the commissioners have probably noticed, the city has changed the language particularly for practical difficulty when we consider a variance, and I think that's a substantial change, and I'd like to just make sure that we're all aware of that change, have the opportunity to discuss what that change may mean, have the city be able to provide some rationale for that change. Certainly, I think that's in our preview to do that before we actually have a variance request on our agenda later tonight, so I think at this time it would be good to do it. So, I'm not sure if we need to vote on the, I'm not sure what the process is, but I would like to interject the motion at some point that we amend the agenda to have that discussion.
Well, I think you would make, you would move to add an amendment to tonight's agenda, and then we'd have a second, and then we'd discuss it, and then we've been all ruled.
Yes, I would like to so move that we adjust the agenda to include that discussion item.
Second, or do people?
No, I'll second that.
Commissioner Rudolph, seconds. Discussion?
Could I just ask for staff, is there any issue with us adding an item prior to a public hearing like this?
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary, no, it's your agenda. I believe that's allowed.
Any questions or discussion? Commissioner Penn?
Yeah, and you said, Commissioner Laban, you said to put that before the regular agenda item, just to be clear on the terms of that.
Yeah, the, I don't want it to be before, I mean, the public hearing part is closed. I know we have an agenda item that's going to discuss a variance in front of this committee, and so at some point or wherever Chair feels appropriate, I'd like to discuss the difference in languages that's provided to this committee since our last meeting before that time.
Okay, thank you.
This is Chair Kwam, zoning opposition to adding that discussion item to the agenda from commissioners or staff. Commissioner Sturza?
Just a question, a clarifying question. Is this a discussion that we couldn't have as part of the discussion for the variance request?
I kind of.
Please, excuse me, please ask you to raise your hands, and I'll call on you. I'm sorry, otherwise, we're gonna, no one's gonna know who's talking. We're gonna talk over each other, so quickly, go raise their hands, please. Commissioner Laban?
Just to finish the question, thank you. I was just curious if this was a conversation that we could have with the discussion about the variance, or if it's a separate conversation, and if it's a separate conversation, is that something that we need to do, some sort of background? Like, I'd not want to do something spur of the moment, so is that something that we should delay for until our next meeting?
Commissioner Rudolph, and then Commissioner Laban.
I was going to as well bring it up, because I noticed it in the detailed notes, and I think it's very important that we get, actually get clarification on this before even hearing this variance, but I don't think we should have the discussion as part of the variance, because the variance should sit on its own, I think.
Commissioner Laban?
I'll echo those thoughts from Commissioner Rudolph. I think that, you know, including a discussion that has to be more about our procedure process while actually discussing a variance is, I think, a little out of order, so I would, again, that's why I'm proposing that we have this discussion, and then we'll move into the variance discussion later tonight.
Just Chair Kwam, I don't see any, I mean, personally, for me, I don't see any problem with discussing, and I'm not sure what the discussion's going to be, but I'm wondering, too, if this might, if staff thinks this is better for a work session, I know that, I understand that we should maybe, that you want to touch on it before we vote on a variance, but in general, I think these are things that we would have a work session on as a commission. So, you know, but, but I'm, for me, I'm willing to listen to the discussion item unless there's opposition. Mr. Penn?
Thank you. Yeah, after just kind of thinking about it briefly, I'm almost wondering if it makes sense to, as much as I want to talk about it beforehand, I almost wonder if it makes sense to talk about it afterhand, just because, just for the sake of the variance request and having some consistency with the language that's been presented in the agenda, like, I don't want to all of a sudden have issues with that and it not reflecting our current thoughts going into that variance request, so I, I might, I mean, should we vote to, should we put this before or after the main agenda item? Is that where we're at?
Well, this is Chair Kwam, I think, and then after me. I think that whoever proposes the motion needs to also propose where it goes on the agenda, and we all would agree on that. Chair Hayford O'Leary, I mean, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
It seems like a fairly narrow conversation about why staff change the language and just understanding what that means. I'm quite confident the law didn't change between the last meeting and now, so I, if maybe you just want to set a time limit, we're gonna talk to this, talk about this for up to 15 minutes, but I think we should just vote on this amendment and just start talking about it, because it's clearly top of mind.
Okay, so the motion was to add it, thank you, the motion was to add it to the agenda, an amendment to, yeah, and there was a second, there's a discussion, and where would you like to add it? Commissioner Laban?
I guess the next item. I don't think we have a large agenda tonight.
Okay, okay. Are people ready to vote on that discussion, adding that discussion item? Okay, great. So, Nellie, would you take role on approval of the tonight's agenda with the amendment of adding a discussion item before a public hearing to address variance language, clarifying that, and we will set a 15-minute limit? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Aye.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Aye.
Commissioner Laban.
Aye.
Commissioner Penn.
Aye.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Aye.
Commissioner Sturza.
Aye.
Six ayes, the ayes have it, and the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. I'm wondering if I can ask for a volunteer, one of the commissioners, to time us for 15 minutes? Is anybody willing to do that for me? Mr. Penn, I saw your hand first, thank you. So, just maybe wave your hand when we're at about, you know, 13 minutes. All right, so the next agenda item is that discussion on, Commissioner Laban? Oh, you're muted.
Mr. Commissioner Laban, we can't hear you.
Pardon me, a new computer, I'm sorry. But since it was my motion to add this, let me start off by saying that, you, obviously, since the last time that we met, the language that's being presented now to present a variance request from, from public is our actual code language. What was in there before was a summary, was a synopsis, was a variance of our actual code language, so I want to bring that to this group to say that when we look at these variants now, it's our actual code, and, you know, the planner's handbook, all the, all the training that we took says that we should be using our own code language, which I think is appropriate. I, for me, the biggest difference is, the previous code language basically said that a practical difficulty is defined as something that prevents the property owner from using the property in a reasonable manner, and I don't want to rehash the last meeting, but city has leaned on that definition before to say, for example, you know, a certain driveway width wouldn't prevent them from using the property in a reasonable manner. Now, the language that's in today basically defines what a practical difficulty is, that the applicant has, I'll read directly, is has difficulties in complying with the code, and though those practical difficulties in connection with granting a variance means that the property owner proposes to use the property in a reasonable manner. Now, and I'll just talk for me individually, that changes the way I would view a variance request going forward. Not sure if it does with the rest of you, but I think that we need to have that conversation, make everybody aware, and I'd also like to get staff's input as to the reason why that language wasn't directly reflective of our code in the past, so I'll stop there.
Chair Kwam, you're muted.
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson, I believe, can you introduce yourself and go ahead?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Kwam, and thanks, commissioners, for being here tonight. I'm David Anderson with Kennedy and Graven. I work with Mary Teich in the city attorney, and I'm obviously here filling in for Mary tonight, and I wanted to just briefly touch base, I think, on some of the comments that Commissioner Laban made. You know, I, I think the confusion is somewhat rooted in the fact that the, some of the language in the staff report has changed. I now was not present at the previous meetings, but what I can tell you is that the statutory provisions and the city's code language that, you know, dictate how and what you need to look at when you address variance requests has not changed for quite a long time. I know the legislature hasn't changed the standard, probably in about 10 years, and that's when they moved to the practical difficulties test. It's my belief, from what I'm getting the sense of, that there was some confusion about the staff report language, but, you know, if you look at all the materials and the resolutions and anything else that you have in your, in your packet when you look at, at these requests, it does have a very concise, I guess, resuscitation or summary of all of the factors that you need to take into account when you're looking at variance requests, and that includes the reasonableness, that's the first prong of the practical, practical difficulties test, as well as the unique circumstances and the central character test. Again, that's all in your code, that's in section 54711 of your city code, but it's also directly from state statute, and every city, regardless of charter cities, statutory cities or otherwise, you have to follow that statutory standard when you look at variances. And so, what I can say is that the, from what I understand about previous decisions that were made, you did apply the correct standard, I'm just not sure if everybody understood exactly the way the stat, the staff report was reading based on how it was interpreting that language. I don't know if you have questions about that, but I'm happy to get into it, but that's kind of my, my brief overview, I guess, of this before we get too far into the conversation.
Okay, Commissioner Rudolph, and I'd like us all to get a chance to ask.
So, so I'll be brief and I'll be quick, you know, and looking actually at the first two questions, one is practical difficulties, going back to what we heard last month, I think we did read it right, because actually, the answer from staff was, you know, the property owner would still be able to use the driveway and garage if the driveway were brought into compliance, you know, I don't think, I think if the question were what city code actually was, and I think that was used in, in the major reliance, if I'm reading it right, that into why we denied it, because, you know, that first question was answered the way it was. I'm still, I think, if we are given, we're all smart people, if we're given, you know, what exactly the code reads, I'm glad we weren't doing this tonight, you know, we, we're all gonna make those decisions for what, what it actually says, you know, and not paraphrased. I'm done.
All right, who's next? Commissioner Laban?
Yes, and maybe this question for Mr. Anderson, you know, you allude to the statutory language, and I'm assuming you mean the statutory language is, is what is in our code language right now?
No, I'm sorry to jump in, but just to make sure we're all clear on that, every city has to, when it comes to municipal planning, abide by chapter 462 of state statute. The variance standard is in 462357 subdivision 6, and that is summarized close to verbatim, if not verbatim, in your code, so it is very similar. I think the code could be clarified or cleaned up a little bit, because what I'll point out to, to staff and the rest of the commissioners is that it almost appears as if the practical difficulties test is in subdivision A1, when it should be, I think, just in subdivision A, and then it should go into all six factors, so it is a little bit confusing, I don't think it, if I were looking at it sort of at a very high level, and especially as somebody who wasn't familiar with the statute, it would, it would be a little confusing to me, but for all intents and purposes, it does summarize that statute, you know, generally speaking, pretty effectively.
Okay, so thank you for those comments, and I think that, that you make my point that, you know, what, what's presented to us in the meeting when we're, when we're, you know, by city staff to review and to evaluate a variance request, I'm not sure why it was summarized previously the way that it was. For me personally, and again, I'm not speaking for any of the commissioners, I think it was, it was a touch misleading to what a practical variance actually needed to be and what standards those needed to rise to, so I appreciate your comments, and I guess I'll turn it over to anyone else that has any questions.
This is Chair Kwam, it is, it is a somewhat ambiguous language for a novice, and talking about myself, after reading it over and over, for me, what we, I always like language to match, because it's less room for argument or debate, but I didn't see any difference in the change, it didn't change it for me, that the practical difficulty part either was met or wasn't met, whether it was not permitted or prevented, it still had to boil down to the practical difficulty, so I think the other language was just to make it a little more understandable for the public, and I don't think that's unusual to do, it didn't change the nature of what was said, but I also like, you know, I liked your, the suggestion to have it match, Commissioner Laban, because it's just, why not, and it's less for us to pick apart, but I didn't, I didn't, it didn't change it for me, I had other questions that were ambiguous for me, and I did try to get answers to that. Anybody else?
I'm done.
All right, so if there are no, no one else, then we will close this part of the agenda, the discussion item.
Do you need a motion?
I don't think so, no, but thanks. Are you leaving now, Mr. Anderson, or do we have the, will we have you, is there, you're in the meeting or?
I'm happy to stick around as long as you guys would like me, I would defer to you, Chair.
Okay, well, I'd love to have you stay, I just wanted to say goodbye for the meeting, so.
I'll stick around.
All right. So, our next item is a public hearing. I, again, I'm gonna repeat the phone number, if, if you want to call in live about this, the number is 612-861-0651, 8612-861-0651, and this is a public hearing to consider a request for a variance at 7329 Fourth Avenue for an air conditioner located approximately two feet from the lot line. Staff, could you read your report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Kwam. So, this is a public hearing to consider a request for variance at 7329 Fourth Avenue for an air conditioner located approximately two feet from the lot line. The property located at 7329 Fourth Avenue South is in the R Single Family Residential Zoning District. The applicant is requesting a variance to allow an air conditioner closer to the lot line than what is allowed in the zoning code. And the zoning code requires that air conditioning units be set back at least five feet from the side lot line in the R Single Family Residential Zoning District. The purpose of this regulation is to minimize the effect of mechanical noise on neighboring properties and to provide sufficient space to maintain the equipment, even if a fence or screening or landscaping is installed along that property line. And the applicant has installed a split system air conditioning unit, and it's about two feet from that side lot line. There are two components to the split system unit, a wall-mounted component and a ground component. Based on the construction of the house, the wall unit can only be installed in that living room wall where it is currently located, and the ground component cannot be moved any further from the wall component, because it would stretch the vent pipes and it would be less energy efficient. This type of ductless air conditioning system is more practical in many older homes where modifications or additions to ductwork could require extensive internal work. The applicant's house sits approximately five, five foot, at the five-foot setback line, which does not allow space for the ground component to meet setback requirements. The applicant reported that the neighbor adjacent to the AC unit is the purpose of a variance approval. In order to grant a variance, the commission must find that the six criteria identified in subsection 547.11 of the city code are met. Full discussion of these criteria are included in the policy section of this report. It is the opinion of staff that all criteria are met, and staff recommends approval conditioned upon submittal of an official property survey with the setback of the air conditioning, air conditioning unit identified for recording purposes. And I don't see the applicant in the meeting, but if you have any questions, I am here to answer them.
Thanks, Nellie.
Do we know, I actually stopped by the property just to take a look from the notes, and I do remember the property owner asked if there was a link for the meeting, they had the number. This was just right before the meeting, so I didn't have time to email Melissa or anybody to see if they had, were able to join.
The meeting notice was forwarded to the applicant, I can see that it was forwarded, but they could call in if they're unable to access us via that link, they could call to that public hearing line, maybe we could repeat that phone number in case they are listening?
Yes, if the applicant is listening or anyone else, please call us at 612-861-0651, and we will, we'll give, give you a minute to call in. Commissioner Penn?
I just had a question, I was a little unclear, it seemed like the unit was already installed, and so we're approving this variance after the fact, is that what's, is that the case?
Yes, that, the air conditioning unit was, I believe, installed in 2017, and the homeowner didn't know about the, the setback requirement until more recently.
Hello?
Yes, welcome to the planning commission meeting, is this the applicant, Mr. Ainsley?
This is Keith Ainsley from 7329 Fourth Avenue South in Richfield.
Okay, we just, we just read the staff report about your air conditioner variance, did, I don't know if you heard it, but do you have anything you'd like to share with the planning commission?
Um, I don't, I don't know what they need to know or what I can add that hasn't already been submitted.
That's fine. And, and I don't know if you're watching us on another device, if you couldn't mute that, if there's some feedback in the background?
Yeah, I've got my computer going, and I'm also on the phone, so it's really confusing here, it's.
Yeah, if you can mute your computer.
I'm trying to, trying to figure out how to do that.
Does anyone have a question for the applicant? Commissioner Laban?
Thank you, Chair, I just wanted to ask, and I didn't read it in any of the materials, but I'm assuming it's spelled that there hasn't been any negative feedback from your immediate neighbor regarding this unit, and that they're supportive of maintaining it where it is?
Well, as, as a matter of fact, I've got a number of neighbors that I submitted in the application that have supported me in this effort, and my next-door neighbor, Craig, he, he has a window air conditioner that's straight across from our living room window in the very southwest corner of, of our, my house, and right across, and his window air conditioner is 10 times noisier than our mini split. I find it ironic that the reason for the setback is to save noise from your neighbor when his window air conditioner is noisier than our mini split by far, but.
Thank you.
This is Chair Kwam, I'm just curious what you had before for an air conditioner in your older home?
We have hot water heat here, so we have no ductwork. We've only had, you know, window air conditioners, which are more energy consumption units, and so we went with the mini split because of the high efficiency of it.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Sturza?
I was curious, the city didn't receive anything from the neighbor supporting the application for the variance, that it's, we're, just word of mouth, that the neighbor supports it?
In the application, there was a signature sheet that I took around the neighborhood for them to sign, and he signed it.
Okay. And the city has that signature sheet? City staff? Yep, okay.
Yeah, Nellie, if you could confirm, since we're recording?
Yes, verbally, yes, we have that.
And this is Chair Kwam, what do you have, precisely?
We have a petition with a handful of signatures on it from the neighbors that is, as part of the variance application packet, neighbors can sign on and support.
Including the neighbor? Including the neighbor right by the air conditioner?
I'm not sure.
Seven three 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 is his address.
Okay. Commissioner Hayford O'Leary, sorry to talk over people. Go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify with the applicant, the staff report makes reference to vent pipes that would be too long. My understanding is that there's not air going into this unit, but refrigerant. And when I looked up, the best I could find of a model, a model made by the same manufacturer, I don't know exactly what you had installed, that indicated that the maximum length of pipes for that refrigerant is sixty-six feet. So I guess I'm wondering, how do we know that it can't go to another location?
Well, I would, I'm just telling you what Midland told me.
Okay. Okay. I guess just since the applicant is here, if I could just ask, I, I will say I I believe in the value of limiting the mechanical noise to neighbors. I think it is, I think, I'm glad that your neighbor is comfortable with it, but I think this air conditioning unit could exist well into future owners of either house. So I am potentially going to ask the commission to consider asking that you add a sound barrier or a fence to deflect some of that noise. I'm just wondering what your comfort level would be with that as the applicant.
A sound, yeah, I'd be open to that.
Okay.
A sound barrier which erected to help deflect the sound.
Sure.
Okay.
I just would need to have the direction on what it would entail or what you would want.
They put one up on their air conditioner.
Well, yeah.
But that won't happen. We know that.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Yeah, you know, so I was out there, and it seems like the unit's fairly small. I'm not sure, you know, I think the fence runs all the way up to it, just, just about to that corner. The neighbor's fence or their fence, I'm not sure whose it is, but I don't know. I don't, I don't know if that's even, even, you know, being looking at it, showing the units maybe, you know, maybe smaller than even most window units, or, you know, so I'm not sure. That wouldn't even be necessary.
But if I'm not mistaken, staff, if they were to receive this, they could put a condenser at the same distance from the lot line in the future, like a full-size central AC condenser, right?
That's true. This is a variance that will run with the land, so they'll be able to replace the unit in the same, in the same location.
Yeah. Oh, I'll let the applicant speak. Sorry.
Excuse me?
Oh, I thought the applicant was about to speak. Sorry.
Commissioner Levin?
Wouldn't, wouldn't they need then to, to change the entire venting of their house to do that? If they were going to add a full condenser unit and onto that spot?
There is no venting in the house.
Yeah, yeah.
Chair, this is Chair Kwam. I think that's why they're meeting the variance criteria is because it would be.
Right. No, but I'm addressing what Commissioner O'Leary was suggesting that in the future, if there was a, you know, a standard air conditioning unit put in there, one that's bigger, noisier. I mean, that would entail a complete redo of the home venting system, wouldn't it? Maybe I'm, maybe I'm off.
The whole house would have to be rebuilt.
Right. So I think the likelihood of that is pretty limited.
Commissioner?
Thank you. Yeah, I think to piggyback on Commissioner Levin's comments, like if they had to redo all the vet work in order to do a new condenser unit, like that condenser unit would feasibly be moved to a better location anyway because they now have the option to move it around. So, I mean, and I think the, to put screening up with, we have about two and a half feet, I think, is what we have from the unit right now to the lot line and to put screening up that would prevent adequability to service, which is also part of the condition of the, or the reason why the, you know, the zoning code exists as it does, you know, so I, I might be opposed to to requiring that, honestly, just for the sake of being able to service the unit effectively. And I'm just, I'm not particularly concerned about long-term, about being able to put a new, larger unit there, but it fits me otherwise.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna disclose, I have personal experience with a neighbor's unit that is closer than normally allowed to the property line. It was, it has been extremely disruptive. I had to spend a large amount of money on a fence to deflect noise from that unit. So I, I appreciate that this neighbor is not bothered by it, but I believe it very easily could be bothersome, whether it's this unit or another unit. The basic purpose of our requirement to have five feet is to limit mechanical noise. In this case, we are told that that is not feasible, and I believe that's not feasible. But I think it is feasible to do something else, which would be to create a screen in this area. I mean, just the neighbor has a fence, so it's probably not super bothersome in their backyard, but it does appear to face onto a bedroom window of the neighbor. So if they, if they are, again, a future owner prefers to keep their window open, and this property owner prefers to use the air conditioner at that time, that is noise going into that window that could be deflected, whether that's a screen that could be removed for for service or whatever, I don't really care what they build. I think just, I would ask, it'd be at least the height of the unit to bounce, bounce noise to the applicant's property instead of onto the neighbor.
Commissioner Rudolph?
I tend to, I tend to agree with Commissioner Penn and Commissioner Levin, that I don't think I would support that either as far as the, you know, because the likelihood of them ever putting a regular air conditioner in that house would be, you know, nearly impossible, you know, without completely redoing that whole house, which at that point, it's a, you know, it's much easier to either move or move it to a different location.
But, but again, they would not have to move it to a different location because they have a variance to put it there. So if you have this variance, why would you put it in the backyard where it disturbs you when you have the right to put it exactly where it is?
I have a question for staff, or the, I think probably staff. I think this has been touched on, but if they did, if someone in the future did put in a different type of unit with all the other, you know, a bigger one and all that, they wouldn't be able to fit it there, wouldn't they have, wouldn't they almost have to relocate it at that point?
Correct, correct. That's correct.
Nellie, thank you.
I, I'm not sure, you know, in the future, they might come out with fancy, smaller air conditioner, central air models. They have, if they get a variance, they could put it, the way it's written right now, they could put it up to that lot line because it, you know, just says less than the required.
I'm sorry, just to interrupt for one second. The purpose of the condition on this variance that requires them to get that survey is so that we know exactly where that line is. This variance would allow them to put the air conditioner where it is, not up to the lot line. We don't want to say that, we don't want you, we're not asking you to grant a variance that allows them to put it anywhere in the side yard setback. We're asking you to grant them a variance that allows them to put it approximately two feet from the lot line. And as a condition of this approval, they have to go out and get the survey. And the survey will confirm exactly where it is. So this is a blanket statement that allows it to go up to the lot line, just to clarify that.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Where is it in here about a survey? I don't see that in the executive summary. Maybe I'm missing it. I'm not sure if it really, you know, based on the pictures and things like that, a survey would be necessary. You can.
A survey is necessary. A survey is necessary. It's a requirement of the application. In this particular case, because we were not sure how the commission would vote, we did give the applicant the option to get the survey afterward if the commission approved the variance. But a survey is necessary so we know exactly where it is, and that if in the future somebody wants to replace this air conditioner, they can replace it in the same location. They can replace, repair, maintain, but they could not move it around to anywhere within the setback.
And I'll, I'll just jump in just to chime in real quickly. That's right. And they also can expand it, so they can expand the size of it. I, I noticed when I looked at the materials that the, the survey condition is in section three A of the resolution for those that were looking for it.
Then can I just ask, so why is it based on the concrete pad and not on the unit itself? If they're, it's just a hand drawing, but it looks like the unit itself is only twelve inches, and the two feet is the two feet to the pad. Could they not, I guess, either for Mr. Anderson or city staff, could they not expand it larger on that pad, or is it, if it's truly limited to the physical footprint of the current AC unit, I'm fine?
No, I think the purpose of getting that survey is to limit it to exactly where it is. So right now, we have to use an approximation because we don't have a survey, which again, is not the ideal way to process a variance. This was staff attempting to work with the applicant because we were less than certain of the outcome. But the survey will show that number, and that number will be recorded in this resolution as part of this. That will be where a, a future air conditioner could go.
Okay.
Further discussion? We have no other callers. All right, does somebody want to make a motion?
Do we need to close the public hearing first? I will be more than happy to make a motion, but.
Yeah, would someone make a motion and a second to close the public hearing?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second? And if Mr. Ainsley, we were, we're going to move on. If you, if you want to either mute or exit the call, we are going to move on to our motion now.
A question. If we would extend their property fence, one, you know, another panel of their fence to hover up and stop their noise, whatever the noise to our line, it'd be what, eight feet, six feet panel?
What you're talking about, going all the way to the corner.
No, well, just one panel.
For us.
For us.
Yeah, that would just take one more.
Would that prevent an issue?
Well, if, just because I was the one discussing the screening, I, that would, I would leave it up to staff whether that's necessary. I, it sounds like probably we're not going to have any additional requirements to that. My concerns are related, and it seems like most of the commissioners don't share my concerns. So I think you, you could probably do that, but I don't think you're going to be required to. It remains to be seen how we vote, though.
Okay, okay, that's, thank you.
Just wondering.
Okay, any discussion on closing?
Okay, so I need to hang up now.
Yeah, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so, thank you very much for your help and this matter. Appreciate it.
Thanks for joining us.
You bet. Okay, bye now.
Bye. All right, any discussion on closing the public hearing? Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. I'm Chair Kwam.
Hi.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Hi.
Commissioner Levin.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn.
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
And Commissioner Sturso?
Hi.
I'm six eyes, the eyes have it, and the motion passes.
Thanks, Nellie. All right, would somebody like to make a motion on this? And, yeah, Commissioner Rudolph?
Yes, I would like to make a, make a motion to approve a resolution allowing a variance for an air conditioner closer to the lot line than allowed by zoning code at seventy-three twenty-nine Fourth Avenue South.
Chair Kwam seconds. Any discussion or amendments? Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
I'm just going to say, I'll, I'll vote to support it unless somebody wants to jump in. I get the impression there's not support for the screening. I, I do think in general, we should be looking for ways that they can meet the intent of the code. And I think requiring a screen would be, in this case, because it is such a small unit, I've been convinced that it's, it's pretty unlikely to be worse than it is, and it's probably not that bad. I, I will also say in terms of neighbor support, you would have to really probably dislike your neighbor quite a bit to say you don't want a variance approved and requiring them to move their air conditioner three years after the fact. So I do want us to weigh how much neighbors might support a variance. That said, it is reasonable for the home. It is a unique situation. I think I'm, I'm fine supporting it, although I would have personally liked to have seen a screen.
This is Chair Kwam, Commissioner Sturso, please.
I would echo what Commissioner O'Leary said. I would support screening. I support the variance, and I also support screening. If screening doesn't, if that's not what the majority of us think, I think that it's variance is so obviously warranted. I do, I mean, I've been to two meetings now, two after-the-fact variances, like, it does make me, like, I am curious, like, if there's any, like, more education that needs to be done, like, what is with the after-the-fact variances? Like, it seems, and it, it, there, my understanding is that we don't consider them any differently than a variance that's requested before the project, but, and maybe it's just a fluke that there's been two of them last two meetings, but they're really, I mean, they're unfortunate situations, and it would be obviously a lot easier if they were, they came into the city prior to construction. But I just wanted to add that I support the screening as well.
Melissa?
To answer Commissioner Sturso's question, this is very odd. We maybe get one variance request a year. We have been fairly proactive in amending our code when we see that things aren't working. And so we don't get a lot of variance requests. And to have two after-the-fact variances, I do think this is an anomaly.
This is Chair Kwam. I, I have some concern too about the after-the-fact, and it is rare. That's why we struggled a lot with the last one, I think, because we don't do it real often, but just, I'm concerned that I don't want, if it's done before or after, that it doesn't, that doesn't affect whether they meet the criteria or not. And it hasn't, I don't think, so far, but that's my concern about doing something and asking for permission after. Is that it not sway me in how I vote? Let's see, anyone else? Discussion? And this Chair Kwam again, I don't know enough about the screening to ask for that requirement. I'm not against it. I just don't feel comfortable personally to vote that that's a requirement. Any other discussion before we take a vote? Did you want to try to move the amendment, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
Nah, no, I think we're fine.
Okay, all right. Nellie, would you take role?
Yes, thank you. Chair Kwam.
Hi.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Hi.
Commissioner Levin.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn.
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
Commissioner Sturso.
Hi.
Six eyes, the eyes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you. And next is our liaison reports. Commissioner Rudolph, do we have a community services advisory commission?
Well, I don't, but as we all know, the, the exciting thing is the Richfield Dog Park out at Roosevelt Park is now open. And there is going to be an open house coming up on, I got the email here, November fourth, I think it is, for ribbon cutting ceremony. So it's exciting news.
It is. All right, thank you. And our liaison to the city council is not with us tonight, so there's no report, no report for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority tonight. Commissioner Levin, is there a Richfield School Board report tonight?
Though, yes, from our last fiscal planning advisory committee, I can say that it was basically around enrollment. And enrollment's looking stronger in our more elementary grades, kindergarten, first and second. Overall, we're down from last year, but not by, I wish I had the numbers with me. I've been trying to find my handout. I don't have the exact numbers, but we're down a bit from last year, but we're better than our projections. So it's, we're, we're looking pretty solid from an enrollment standpoint. I do know that with kids in, 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 in high school, two of them, the distant learning for me is, you know, been challenging to get used to. I'm trying to gauge, and I've asked kind of what the overall feedback has been from our platform or our approach for distant learning. And I, the principal, excuse me, the superintendent responded basically that our model is essentially kind of, it kind of is in the middle from what other districts are doing. We have one day where my kids go into school and then four days at home, virtual learning, and that seems to be, you know, there are some districts that are all virtual, there are some that are more. you know, there are some districts that are all virtual, there are some that are more, uh, in school and actually that might change. Um, but it seemed like we were kind of in, in the middle of those, of those groups, so, um, that, that's what I have from a school board perspective.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary, any report for the transportation commission?
Um, just the last meeting, we went over sixty-fifth street, which is going to be redone next year, um, detailed areas that are just maybe of interest, uh, sixty-fifth and Pillsbury went, had a lot of back and forth for the whole last year about what to do there. It is going to be opened up in both directions, but there've been a number of changes to strongly discourage hog traffic from cutting straight north through there, but to still open up access to, for the residents. Um, and, uh, roundabout at sixty-fifth and Lundale, just, I thought an interesting crossover of planning and transportation where unfortunately, the, uh, driveway locations that were allowed to persist with windings are, are posing kind of an unpleasant feature in the roundabout, but, uh, um, it is what it is and I guess we're making the best of it, but anyway, so those are the two things. Oh, also, um, it didn't happen before our last meeting, but seventy-seventh street underpasses is only fully funded as part of the new state bill, so maybe that'll actually happen next year, sorry.
Thank you, and the bonding bill finally went through.
Can I ask a question, Commissioner O'Leary, I noticed that the tunnel under four ninety-four, uh, for the transit is, is that, is that, is that actually through now? I, I can't tell, I can see when I go into Dick's that it looks like it is, but on the other end, I can't tell if it actually is, is coming out.
I don't think it's all the way, I haven't seen it recently, I know it doesn't officially open for traffic for at least another year, but.
Yeah, that's a big project, interesting to see that evolve.
It's amazing how much like this, like tiny, like little two-lane thing takes forever to build.
Thank you.
All right, next we have chamber of commerce, which is currently vacant, wondering if we have any interest from anyone for taking that liaison role?
I can take that over.
Thank you, Commissioner Sturza. Next, the city planners report?
I don't have anything to report, Chair Kwam.
Okay. Uh, my next Richfield Planning Commission meeting is Monday, November twenty-third, seven PM, again here on WebEx and you can still participate, um. And I wanted to, again, thank Mr. Anderson for joining us and giving us your expertise tonight and everyone else. Um, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting? I will also move.
Commissioner, Commissioner Penn, second.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, Nellie, would you take role on adjourning?
Yes, Chair Kwam.
Hi.
Commissioner Hayford O'Leary.
Hi.
Commissioner Levin.
Hi.
Commissioner Penn.
Hi.
Commissioner Rudolph.
Hi.
And Commissioner Sturza.
Hi.
Six eyes, the eyes have it, and the motion passes.
All right, that brings us to the end of the meeting, thanks, good night, everyone.